Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three items on the consent agenda is their motion for approval.
For approval?
Second, with a document, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, consent agenda passes, thank you. Student reps, Carolyn and William. Good to see you guys again.
Good to see you. Okay, I'm wondering off this thing. So, I'm gonna start off with FBLA. Regional Awards will be held on Wednesday night. They are getting ready for state and that will be held the first week in April. FBLA Week started today and they're, um, and they are doing it all week so it's like fun activities within the school. FFA, FFA is preparing for exceptional contests. Uh, many students have been preparing to perform their speeches. There will be two creed speakers, one beginning speaker, a sentence speaker, and one advanced speaker. Next Monday, um, the eighteenth, um, they're going to the Cascade. ASB, ASB has been working on new activities within the school such as counselor of the week. Um, they have been working on Queen of Hearts and they are expecting about 500 or more students. Uh, they will be, the dance will be February 22nd. The juniors are working on prom and getting everything organized with that. Daskin's Drama Club, they have been working on Frog Prince. The first, the first show will be on March 1st, 2nd at 7 o'clock. March 3rd, they will do Jonah 2 and 6, 7th, and 8th will be shown at 7 o'clock. Spring one act auditions are coming up, February 19th through the 22nd. And then Key Club, they are preparing for elections and giving the clubs prepared for district conventions starting off next month. Key, Key Club, um, will be doing two hands-on service activities within the community.
Alright, um, sports. In swimming, both the boys and girls ended up in seventh place in the Mid Willamette League. Senior Joseph Reedy placed fourth in the 200 individual medley and second in the 100 backstroke. Joseph broke his own school record in the backstroke by a second at districts and is expected to go to state. He is the only Silverton swimmer to make it to a final beat. In consolation finals, he decided ninth through 16th place. There was, in the 200 free, Mandy Zitzelberger who placed 15th and Jonathan Sisley who placed 13th. In the 200 individual medley, Nicole Branchton placed 15th and Tyler Koheid placed 14th. In the 100 fly, Nicole Branchton placed 14th, uh, Lindsay Orr placed 15th, and Adrian Crowsey placed 14th. In the 500 free, Manzi Zitzelberger placed 16th and Jonathan Sisley placed 11th. Besides Joseph Reedy, the season has ended for the swimmers. This year they have more participants than ever as the program continues to grow. Dance team, over the past month, dance team has put on community events and competed in their first traditional competition. Friday, January 18th, the girls organized and led a basketball halftime Little Dancer Camp performance. The team also recently competed February 2nd at State and High School in the State and High School Invitational. It was their first competition. Overall, the team placed fourth and sophomore Chelsea Go- Goode placed in the top five in drill down. Next up for the team is the spring invitational this Saturday, February 16th. Cheer team, on the other hand, has competed in four competitions over the past month including state. January 19th, the girls placed first out of 13 teams at Sheldon High School. January 26th at Jesuit High School, they earned third. On February 2nd at the Salem Pavilion, they also earned third. At state this past Saturday, February 9th at Memorial Coliseum, they took 10th place out of numerous teams. This was the first year the girls placed first in any competition and placed third in three consecutive competitions. It was a remarkable season. Wrestling, the wrestling team continues to have their ups and downs. At their last meet in duel with Woodburn High School, February 6th, the team overcame their opponent. Currently, senior Quinn Drayer is ranked second in state and Isaac Tobin is ranked third in their weight divisions. Next up for the wrestling team is this, this Friday, February 15th at West Albany High. In girls' basketball, the team continues to fight with an 8-11 overall record and a 4-6 lead record. They are sixth in the 5A Mid Willamette Conference. In their last game, February 8th against Woodburn, they won 64-39. Next, girls' basketball will continue with Dallas, February 13th. And finally, boys' basketball. Boys' basketball team continues to have an outstanding season. They're first in the Mid Willamette Conference with a 10-0 lead record and third in state with a 60-4 overall record. Recently, wing Toby Roth was recognized for his efforts by being nominated for the Spaceman Journal Athlete of the Week. The team is coming off a strong win February 8th at Woodburn with a 60-44 score. As the season continues to close, the boys will hope for a strong playoff run and possibly competing for a championship. Next, they will face Dallas, February 13th, in one of their final four regular season games. That's all for sports, thanks everyone.
Very good, questions for these guys?
Great report.
Good report, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah, these ones.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open it up with our, to our first audience with visitors. Would anybody like to address the board? Okay, you'll get another chance later. Moving to discussion items, the draft 2013-14 school calendars was in our packet. Um, and I don't, we also got an email from Andy and well, actually from Marie Traeger saying that the, the association was interested or requesting that we delay approval of the calendar until our meeting in March because they wanted to bring a proposal that would include separate conference times for the elementary and the high school. So, high school is in October, elementary, but that's what I heard. But they wanted to bring a proposal, a proposal with that, so, um, that we do have a, I think it's on our agenda to, we have to approve the calendars tonight, but we could delay that till March if we wanted to. So, any discussion on that?
I don't have a problem with them being able to actually get together, I mean, and have a set time that they're gonna discuss it and bring it forward. It's a month, it's not like a long difference in time.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that.
Do they need that much time or can we actually do it in our work session?
Well, I was, I had thought of that tonight, wondering if, um, if they, if they could get a proposal to us by our work session and then we wait till our March meeting to, to approve it, that might give the work, give a chance for the word to get out there a little bit. Because if the, having separate conference times for the high school and the elementaries is gonna be something different and it might be nice if parents had a chance to weigh in on that a little bit. Which would give them a couple weeks if we've done a proposal in our work session and waited till March, so.
Is there any conflict with bargaining?
No, you can, you, if you, if you'd like, I can ask them to present it in time for you to have in your work session packet.
Yeah, they'd like to come and explain it too, they'd be very.
And come to the work session and explain it. So, that would be, uh, your packet is, will be sent out on, uh, it helps if I could see. So, your packet will be sent out on the 20th. So, I'll ask the association to have a proposal by the 20th and to be prepared to come to the work session and present it to you.
Okay. Well, they could even, if you had to go.
Or just got it to you at the work session, would you be okay with that? Okay.
I just thought that might give a chance for parents to weigh in.
Sure. Will do.
I had some reservations about it because, um, you know, we strive for so long to get those calendars the same, as close to same as we can, so, but I, I heard some kind of compelling arguments from some people at Mark Twain, so, um, so, I'd like to see what you guys propose. Okay, revisions to policies. We're gonna go through these one by one in case anybody has anything. EEA, EEAB, student transportation services. Anything on this one? Nothing, okay. Policy GBJ, weapons in school staff. Comments? Oh, come on.
I'm looking for it right now. This is our first, uh, first reading of proposed revisions.
Yes.
So, we're gonna be looking at this.
We are.
Again, in the future. I'd like to have a much more comprehensive conversation about this. And because of the nature of my work this time of year, which is living with sheep and lambs, I, I don't have all of my materials together. So, I'll have plenty to say about it with the next, the next review of this.
Okay, okay. This is one we had talked, talked about rescinding, but I guess we're not able to rescind it, so there's just a couple changes on it, so.
In fact, if I can comment on that, Tim.
Yeah.
The, uh, your, your policy GBJ, weapons in school staff is, is required by federal law. Uh, the Safe Free School, School Zone Act of 1990, so, and that policy was originally adopted in the 90s. You did revise it somewhat in 2009, specific to, um, appeal court interpretation of concealed weapon permit use in, uh, and, and your, your authority to, to ban concealed weapons in, in a K-12 setting on campus and activities. And so, this, this policy is, as you asked at the last meeting, is, is a way for you to revisit that and have some additional conversation about whether that currently meets your needs or not.
Yeah, I think we've all learned a lot over the last few weeks.
And, I don't know, I think there was some more conversation of looking into, not necessarily the concealed weapons end of it, but having the presence of an officer that wasn't, you know, there's no concealment about it, that they're walking the hallways and they have a presence known and the kids know that, they're there and that, we were kind of discussing that a little bit more too.
Like, as in the school resource officer?
It was the school resource officer or having a police officer, you know, we had discussed what the cost was. If, you know, that was a possibility to bring back into the school as well. And we haven't really gotten specific numbers on that because for me, it's not so much a concealed issue. I don't think that's necessarily where I would be headed. I'd be more headed for the presence and the relationship with the kids and, you know, the protection of the kids. That's more what I'd be interested in, you know, having.
I feel concealed is an important part of security and just, just the opportunity to have that presence there.
And you currently allow law enforcement to carry weapons on campus, that's part of your policy. And, uh, that's allowed according to state law as well. And we have had that up until a year ago with a school resource officer funded through Silverton Police Department at Silverton High School. But many of the, the rural schools as well have had, have had Marion County Sheriff deputies on campus for one reason or another, multiple times in the past. So, that is, is clearly, uh, continues to be an option. Uh, the, the average, the cost for, for, on average, for a Silverton police officer, if the person was full-time with benefits, would be right around $100,000.
Just for the benefit of the audience, in case you don't really know what we're discussing here, the, the weapons in school staff policy, um, right now doesn't allow for concealed weapons permit carriers to carry on school property. And what we're talking about dropping that part of it, so concealed weapons permit holders could carry on school property. And, um, this might be a good, good discussion for our next work session. And also maybe talk a little more about what Julie talked about with the resource officers and even security, you know, security, things like that. Any other thoughts on this?
So, when we're talking about concealed weapons, are we talking about staff with permits or the general public with permits?
Yes.
Anybody.
We're talking about.
Anybody that has a concealed weapon.
Yeah.
I guess I would just offer that, um, personal defense and home defense with a concealed weapon are completely different scenarios and situations than trying to defend, uh, a group of people in a setting like a public school. It really requires an extraordinary level of training, which the police, law enforcement officials have ongoing and gun permit holders do not. Once you issued a gun permit in Oregon, you're not required to have any additional training or to keep up practice or strictly designed for self-defense, personal defense, home defense, that kind of thing. So, I really worry about that, about untrained or poorly trained people having deadly force in our public schools. And we'll have more conversation about this, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, I think we will. Yeah, I would like to see some kind of intervention, but, um.
That's what they do, that's the intention.
Yeah.
And to clarify, my understanding is we don't have the authority to prohibit the public from concealing and carrying on campuses unless they're an approved volunteer or a staff member. So, really, we can only apply our policy to the staff and to volunteers and contracted employees.
That's correct.
Contract workers, correct.
Is there any way to get some staff feedback on this too?
Yeah, we did discuss, uh, completing a staff survey, but I've held off on that until you've had your first review of this policy. But, uh, I typically head directly toward Dustin Haney who helps set up a lot of surveys for the district. So, I can, I can ask Dustin and, and we can put a few survey questions together and survey staff on that.
I would be interested to see what, what staff thinks about, about this.
I've been approached by several staff members that are very interested in the ability to carry weapon at school. I think they're a little bit afraid to come forward because if the district go through, they don't necessarily want people to know that they're carrying. So, we need to be careful how we ask for information.
Sure, you're talking about anonymity, I mean, being anonymous in the survey, sure, I agree.
I, I wanna make it clear, I'm really not for the idea of having the concealed. I'm really more for the protection of the kids and the trained officers and that. There's, I think it's a very big difference between those two. And I agree with David that you have to be well-trained in order to be able to protect the students. It's very different than, you know, protecting your home.
Anything else? Okay, Marika, a quick discussion, thanks. Policy GCDA, DDVA, criminal records checks, fingerprinting. Anything on this one? These were all pretty straightforward. IL, assessment program. Nothing, okay. JECDB, inter-district transfer students.
Yeah, some comments on this one. You hacked the policy pretty well here. And I didn't see why we hadn't been rid of all of this. The first paragraph talks about students are expected to attend the school serving their place of residence, which I think in general we, we want. Further down, it talks about principals prepared to assist parents in making an informed choice, which I think is a good thing to do. And then it also talks about parents to be responsible for providing transportation, which I think is an important point as well. So, not sure why we suggested taking all this information out.
The, each one of the paragraphs, well, it refers to the No Child Left Behind Act. And so, while, while there are elements of it that I, I agree could be, could be maintained in there, I, I think it's just a matter of, of rewording to include some of those highlighted points that the board would like to see maintained and those that you suggest, I think are fine. So, I can surely play with that. I, again, I think that the, the reason for the inter-district transfer, uh, policy changes and actually the majority of the policy changes are the submitted waiver by the Oregon Department of Education to the US Department of Education to get us out from under the, the rules of No Child Left Behind.
Which is great, but I think we keep many elements of this type of policy.
Okay. So, to be certain that I'm, I, because I can adjust this, uh, attendance areas, I see that being maintained to expect to attend the school they serve unless an option transfer is available, et cetera. And again, that, that can remain, uh, the next paragraph is exclusively No Child Left Behind. Principals are prepared to assist parents in making an informed choice in our attendance areas, that's fine, I can do that. And then to, to inform, not to dissuade.
How about provide the transportation? Parents provide transportation.
Right, the next, uh, next one.
Yeah.
And also last one, I think, if there are any reviews, good as well.
Yeah, and I think, and I, I think it's fine keeping those in there. A, a couple of these items are specific to your administrative rule as well. You have a multi-page administrative rule related to inter-district transfers. And my sense is there are some school districts that may provide transportation and it may be a consideration for you as well. And it's, and it's a simpler process to adjust an administrative rule than it is a policy. And so, we can keep that in there, especially related to, to transportation. But if you have any interest in your mind at all at some point in the future about that, then I would just, I would just ask that you just keep that in your mind, okay? But I can come back with those changes.
Okay, question. Anything else on this one? Okay. JECF, inter-district transfer residents. I had a question on the paragraph five, the, why, I just wondered why that was all taken out. The superintendent may choose to deny transfer request or not to extend transfers for another school year at the school district, which is still a transfer, regularly denies transfer request. Is that gonna tie our hands if, I just think of situations where, um, where like, when we had, you know, not even requests and there aren't even transfers between certain districts and.
The, the, the reason for number five, if I'm not mistaken, Tim, is again, the, the ability of, uh, the transfer options for schools or school districts that were under the sanctions of, of the No Child Left Behind Act. And your, your administrative rule, again, states much of this information already. We can keep it in policy, that's, that's not a problem. But it's, um, it's something that I believe was intended at the time in the early 2000s to address the No Child Left Behind sanctions.
Okay, okay.
But I can, I can leave, I can leave it in there.
Well, if it's covered somewhere else, that's fine too. I just didn't want it to tie our hands.
I'll, I'll look and I'll confirm that.
That's something I'd like to know. Anything else on any of these before we move on? Okay, 2013-14 District Achievement Compact, we, that was a handout tonight. Andy, do you wanna address this one a little bit?
Uh, yes, this is the second year that you'll be required to approve a one-year achievement compact specific to Silver Falls School District in multiple areas and multiple, uh, quantifying measures that you have in front of you. In fact, uh, you referred to the achievement compact in one of your board goals this year. So, rather than identifying a particular achievement level in reading and math, I can't cite the exact goal right now, but you were instead referred to your approved 2012-13 achievement compact. So, it, it serves as a, a very distinct purpose of identifying the targets, the benchmarks for the school district to reach year by year in a progressive and, in a progressive fashion with the purpose of 100% graduation of students in this district by the year 2025. And again, largely grounded in the governor's 40-40-20 goal. 40% of your graduates off to four-year universities, 40% essentially to community college, and 20% directly into the workforce. And so, the, this, the compact is required by law and it's the result of about four meetings now of a compact advisory committee putting this together. We're required to provide it to you in early February. You seek public input, community input, you dialogue a little bit about it right now, and then you're required to act prior to June 1st. It's also a document that I'll be sharing with the budget committee because it's designed, even though we could debate this probably all night, it's designed to help drive budget-making decisions specific to achievement of students. But then again, when you're in the middle of a year that has four furlough days and, you know, limited, uh, economic variables, it's a little difficult to put something like this in front of you. You will notice on the achievement compact, there is a reference on the bottom to current funding levels in this district as compared to, uh, the, the state sanctioned quality education model funding level. Uh, you'll notice a pretty significant difference in, in that amount of funding for Silver Falls District. So, that's, that's it. And so, it's, I'll put it on your agenda again at, at your next meeting. And I commend the committee for coming up with this document, they've done a nice job. And they'll augment that with some, some strategies, not to the extent of your, uh, district improvement plan, but there'll be some strategies, some general strategies to go with this prior to submitting it to the state.
Out of curiosity, is that QAM box, is this all a template you get from the, from the, yeah?
Yes, the QAM, right. And then chalkboard project and, and other very large, uh, education support groups have helped to sort of define what that quality education model level looks like.
It seems a little baby to me, but, I understand.
Yeah.
This was a lot of work.
Uh, committee did well, yeah, and Dustin Haney especially, he was the chairperson of that committee and really led some great efforts with that group.
Thank you, that's nice. Okay, comments on this? I would suggest looking this over on your own time and we can have more of a discussion on it at our March meeting. And did you say we approve it by June?
Yeah, it'll probably like to be an action item in May.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, I'll a little closer and we'll put that on our March agenda. Moving on, discussion on the general obligation capital projects bond election in May 2013. I'm gonna go ahead and read the rest of this. For revenue generation of up to $36.9 million to fund projects of adaptive reuse of the Slater Street campus, completion of district-wide deferred maintenance upgrades, and vacating of Eugene Field School. This is an action item later tonight to, to decide if we're interested in putting a bond on the May ballot, so, discussion.
One other comment is, I think we've had a really good discussion about Slater Street and Eugene Field, but we need to do a lot more work on the maintenance list and what we're doing with the outline schools. I think we have a proposal out, out in front of the public and we've looked at, we have looked at the details. So, it'd be nice if then our, maybe our next work session really to refine that and, uh, make, make sure it's what we want. I think, I think part is putting the bond on the, on the ballot. If we're gonna do it in May, we have to do it today, we've got a dollar amount we can stay within. But, uh, again, we need to work on some of the details. Yeah, I agree, Wally.
Uh, and you're referring to details of the, of the, the current deferred maintenance list and upgrades that we've seen, okay, okay.
We've spent, the, by far, the majority of our time, probably 90% of our time talking about, um, Slater, Eugene Field.
And, uh, from my point of clarification, what, um, what would that look like as far as additional? Would you, would you like additional opportunity for dialogue, to have all the lists in front of you?
I think we need more to be able to.
Okay, okay, great.
But, man, we may need input from the, from the schools as well. At, at minimum, we need at least talk as a board.
Sure, sure.
Andy, to be clear, you and Pete, you had dialogue with the administrators and teachers at each school, is that correct?
Well, Pete, Pete has maintained deferred maintenance list for years in this district with occasional conversation with, with principals as appropriate and as, as we could afford. Uh, and so, the, the lists aren't necessarily anything new, but the definition, I think, of the list and what some of those projects are have become much more defined than they've ever been in the past. Pete did make, make an effort and has made an effort this year to send, uh, what he believed were the appropriate lists to the administrators, having conversations with the majority of them, but at a minimum, having email dialogue with each of the administrators for them to receive some input. There's more, uh, sort of staff input at some buildings than other. But the lists are out there still designed at this point now to still receive additional public input about what those could look like. The, the element that I think it's important to remember, while I, I think it's important also for the board to have some additional conversation, and that is that, that Pete knows these buildings inside and out and he's our maintenance director. And so, if there's anybody that can identify, in my mind, uh, some of the higher prioritized needs from a maintenance and deferred maintenance and upgrade standpoint, uh, it is Pete. Now, Pete will acknowledge, and I agree with him, that, yeah, it's not a perfect system. And that's where you come in, that's where the public come in, comes in, that's why the lists are posted on the website now, so we can continue to get additional public input specific to those lists. They're also being shared independently with community groups as, as we continue to present throughout the school districts. So, I can put it on your, your March agenda. Keep in mind your March agenda, or, excuse me, your February work session agenda is getting very full. You've got a number of, of pretty, uh, high, high conversation topics already, so, but we can put it on there.
We can at least begin to look at it a little bit.
Yes.
Even if we just, correct if I'm wrong, but even if we decide to put a bond on the ballot in May, the deferred maintenance list isn't set in stone, right?
Correct.
It's, I mean, things can be moved around even if we move through this process in the next few months.
That's right, and some of that decision could even be, or would likely be, uh, be handled by the citizen oversight committee, well, we'll have a bond advisory committee for the bond, this bond as well. And they'll, they could also be assisting in, seeking additional direction about, uh, some of the priority of some of the projects in each of the schools.
We really should have a pretty firm law by time May comes around.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, yeah. I did hear, if I, you know, public comment and from the individual school, I'd have heard a couple comments from people. And some of the schools that, you know, looking at that list, they do think there's some things, certain schools anyway, they do think there's some things that could be handled by some of their volunteers. Paying it's. painting and some things like that. So it might be good if we could get some input or, you know, give people a chance to weigh in on some things like that.
Sure, you bet.
Well, and I think we need to check with our insurance too, though, when it comes to volunteer on some of those projects, we have to be careful.
Yes, Pete does a really nice job of doing just that, or, and, uh, including painting. We don't just allow any volunteer to paint. In fact, we typically require some kind of supervision by a, a painter who has experience and in some cases even insured, even when painting classrooms and outsides of buildings and things like that, which, because it's, it's a risk.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So a question and then a comment. Andy, can you tell us what the financial cost to the district would be for a, a bond attempt? What are the costs that we would incur?
The... Placing, placing the bond on the ballot?
Yes.
You know, I'd have to double check with, with Marion County elections. Jan, do you recall what the cost for election placing on the ballot is?
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap. And it seems it's, it's in the two or three thousand dollar range.
No, I think it's more than that.
Is it more than that? Okay.
Five to ten.
Okay.
Depends on what else is on the ballot. You share the cost of all the mailings and stuff, yeah.
That's right, it is shared with the number of initiatives or ballots.
Yeah. I think, and then my comment is, and I hate to be the contrarian tonight, but maybe that's my role this evening. I have real misgivings about, about sort of the ambitious timeline here. I think that the needs are very real and the discussions that we've had and the planning that we've done are very good, but I'm not convinced from my perspective, living outside of Silverton proper, that a sizable number of our voters in the outline portions of our district really understand what we're doing. And I would like to see the bond succeed, the effort succeed rather than fail. And so I agree with what has been said this evening about needing to refine and to pin down exactly what's, what we plan to do in terms of facilities upgrades in the K eight feeder districts. But I think that we need to have that nailed down well in advance of a May election. I think months in advance. So I have very serious concerns about, like I said, that sort of accelerated timeline here. I think we're moving much too quickly with a portion of our voting populace not well-educated about what we're doing. It's one person's opinion.
Sure.
As shared with many other people to me, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it, you know, it'll definitely require more education, but in my mind, I think this is a really good opportunity to do this. Since the other bond, first bond on the high school is expiring, I think it's just a really good opportunity to do it in May rather than to wait till November. I think the community meetings we had, had, especially the last one, was really positive. A lot of positive comments from people, hardly any negative comments at the meeting. I was just really, really pleased with the way that went. And as far as the lack of maintenance list on the outline schools, I think we could, it's pretty much, I mean, it's all there, it's pretty much done. We do need to review it and, and talk about it more amongst ourselves, but I think we could be there by May and knowing, you know, having specifics of what's gonna be on the ballot. I just think it's a, it's a good opportunity to put it on in May rather than to wait till November. Personally. We've had a lot, I always said we've had a lot of good discussion about Slater and Eugene Field and, you know, we'll, I think we have somewhat of an idea where we're, what we're gonna do with that, but I think we, we will nail that down into next month and...
And publicize it.
And publicize it. And I think people are really gonna know what, what's gonna be involved in this, but I don't think it's insurmountable to do it personally. Other comments? Oh, Tom Bukels called me tonight and I told him I'd share a couple of things. He has a hundred and two temperatures, so he's stayed home tonight. He did say he wanted me to share that he's skeptical about putting on also on a May ballot and mainly for the reason that he, he's afraid that a new, or, you know, a remodeled or new whatever, however we decide to do that, a bigger school in town if we build it to capacity is gonna pull kids from the outline schools and especially at the upper grades. And he's a little worried about that and would like to see more discussion about, about how we would deal with that. Or, he's just, he said if he would, if he would vote tonight, he would be, he would be a no vote. He's just real skeptical about that part of it.
That's, that's interesting, because what I hear is the opposite, that people are afraid we're actually gonna drive their kids into town and pull, pull kids out of the outline schools, that's a, which we have no intention of doing. It's a different perspective.
Yeah. I know when there was talk of the district-wide middle school, that wasn't a popular topic.
No, not at all.
Well, and the fact that it is, that we need every one of our outlining schools, we have, they're all at ninety-five percent capacity, so it's not like...
Total district.
Yeah, total district across the district, so.
Yeah.
That's not saying we, um, that's not saying we don't need to discuss some of the, some of the situations going on out there. For sure, we need to discuss.
I think we understand that.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I think the need is, you know, the need is great for our, to get out of Eugene Field, especially after seeing that, some of the slides that were on the presentation the other night and the need to do something on Slater and to do something of maintenance on all the outline schools is pretty good, pretty great.
And improve the security of revolved schools.
And the technology upgrades, get everybody on the same plane level field, especially as we get into common course standards and some things like that. Or create our technology capacity to do those things. Anything else? Action item later tonight? Any other items? Any other discussion items? Okay, administrator and staff reports. Andy?
Each of the administrators, his principals have received their least projected allocations for the two thousand and fourteen, thirteen fourteen school year. You've been asked to submit their budgets back to the district office, the business office, by March eighth. It's a very similar process as we followed in the past. Your first budget committee meeting is scheduled for early April, April, April eleventh. At that time, the budget committee and each of you will have a copy of the proposed budget for next, next school year. We are operating on, off of the governor's proposed budget of six point four billion biennial K twelve budget for K twelve education and we're also operating on the assumption that there will be some savings to, in, within that budget due to at least two elements of PERS reform that will likely produce some, some reduction in, in expense at the state level. So the, the net operation allocation across the state is six point one five billion that we're operating on. It's a pretty common theme in most school districts. There, I, I have no idea where the legislature is going to end up. Legislative representatives have stated they hope to have some information to school districts, at least a firm number by early or mid-April to give them indication of what the next biennial, biennial budget will look like. And I think as all of you know, the governor's budget is just a, the governor's attempt at what it will, will look like for the next two years. And the legislature, of course, has significant influence on that prior to it being approved. The, uh, there is an economic forecast for Oregon scheduled to come out this Friday. I encourage you to keep a close eye on that and see what it looks like. Some folks are anticipating it, it could, could tick up slightly, but, you know, my optimism is in check until, so to speak, we see the writing on the wall. So ideally, in fact, the budget that allocations that each of the administrators have received assumes a complete school year next year, no furlough days, but it also assumes no adjustments from current salary and benefit levels with the belief that those are handled at the bargaining table. So no cost of living adjustment, no insurance adjustment, but completion of a full school year. So as is, has been the case in the past, those are all determined at the bargaining table and are very complex decisions.
Questions for Andy? More fun?
Yeah.
Jan, financials?
I have nothing to add to what you're receiving now unless you have a question.
Food service report looks, yeah, looks great.
They did get the additional six percent for lunch on the new menu planning and that was retroactive to the first of the school year. So that's significant.
Good. Questions for Jan? Okay, Jennifer Henn in Eugene Field.
I'm very lucky, I'm very lucky to be in Eugene Fielders. So you guys probably all know what Debbie did here, because she was doing for many years in many capacities. And then you may not have met Aaron Johnson yet, he's our new functional skills teacher and he's based center with his family from California. I don't know if you grew up in the... And we are gonna run technology, I know, which is a stretch for me. You can notice that I brought technical and your manager left the board.
Maybe that was why.
Yeah. Sorry, guys.
It's alright.
Yeah, yeah, alright, so it does. Oh, look at that, she gets that smart. Okay, Eugene Field, currently we're at one hundred and sixteen kindergarten, one hundred and thirty-three first grade. That's our, those are our classes that go up to twenty-eight kids. That's, that's pushing us a little. A hundred and four second grade, one hundred and ten third grade, total of one hundred and ninety-three students. Seventy-three E L D students and we currently have mostly Spanish speakers, some Russian speakers, Polish, Somali, and one who speaks only Dutch. So, good thing our E L D programs are off in the... Fifty-two percent of our kids are free and reduced lunch and we do have thirty-eight transfer students, thirteen of them come from out of district. So what's new with us, what, what our focus is as a staff right now is looking at what keeps our kids from performing their best. So starting at the beginning of the day, sometimes the beginning of the day, because we have five hundred children arriving with parents, many of them in a twenty-minute time span with no parking lot, it can be a little bit like starting your day in Chuck E. Cheese. So we have made some attempts to offer lots of options for kids to go places that fit well for them and to spread them out of bed. So we have supervision outside for kids who just wanna run it out early in the morning. We have our choice room, which is our guidance and counseling classroom, and there are lots of choices for kids to do in there. There are, there's breakfast happening in the gym and also an activity that's supervised by a couple of parents and staff member. The library is open during that time. We have many kids that come to the office. Poor Debbie runs like a coloring workshop several times a day. Our Mars room, our L R C and our E L D rooms are all open to give homework support early in the morning for kids who kind of chronically come with homework not finished. So that spreads them out pretty well.
Jennifer Ross Morris?
Oh, sorry, math and reading support.
Okay.
It sounds more fun than Title One.
Yeah.
So, um, one of our achievement gaps is in our E L D students. So these kiddos, some of them are coming in with very limited exposure to English. If they come from a home where parents speak Spanish and they don't have older siblings that have come through yet, they may have had very little exposure to English. So we do have a new E L D instructor this year. Ingram Mania has moved out of kindergarten and into E L D. We elected as Eugene Field to fund her full-time because we feel like this is the kind of golden opportunity in kids this age to soak up the language and learn that quickly. And she certainly has the expertise to help them do that. So she also graciously moved into what was previously the counseling office so that the counselor could open the guidance classroom. So she's in a pretty small space, but they do amazing things in there. So one of the first things we did is change the kinder busing schedule. So we have our kindergartners for two hours and twenty minutes, which is not enough time to pull them out for any services. They really can't miss any of those minutes. So she has the morning kindergartners stay. She teaches them E L D when the other kinders have left and then they eat lunch and they get on the bus that is dropping off the P M kindergartners. And then the P M kindergartners come early and have lunch and then do E L D with her and then go to class. So our E L D kids are having E L D extended beyond their kindergarten day. Another change that she made this year is, um, in the past years, we've done first grade group, second grade group, third grade group, kindergarten group, and she has them leveled by their language level regardless of what grade they are. So we have mixed grade groups based on language level, which allows them to have quicker progress in their language levels. She also is doing fewer longer language lessons. So the way the schedule has been set previously is in thirty-minute blocks and if you're from one end of our building, that can mean fifteen minutes by the time you get from one end of the building to the other and you've changed time zones sometimes from the kindergarten end to the, to the other end. We're not, we're not synced very well. So, um, she has them for forty-five minutes, three days a week, and then the other two days a week, she's open for classroom support, which is something we previously didn't have. So teachers are loving that. She can reteach concepts and lessons immediately after teachers have taught them. She can talk kids through them in their own language if it happens to be Spanish. She's working on her Dutch. But, uh, yeah, they can come with homework that they need help with. There's lots of options during that time. And then they, they, and I say they, the A L D team, Georgine Kenzie is also on that team, take on a case management role in terms of being connected with families, sending work home in Spanish if parents only speak Spanish. They feel that language development is language development and they're specialists in that. So I just leave them and say, yes, send it home in Spanish. Kids practice in Spanish at home and practice in English at school and are building their language skills both ways. And then the expectations of those kids are very high. She has them out doing interviews with staff and scavenger hunts and putting up game show quizzes for the other students in the school. It's very impressive what they're doing. So we anticipate that they're, that they'll move through the language levels quickly. Our guidance program, so they have moved into a classroom. Just a funny story, that's Mr. Valdez, he's our counseling intern. Our counselor is Janie Bure, and the kids call her Mrs. B. And so the kids call him Mr. B. Because he's in that room, so he's Mr. B. So she teaches every classroom forty-five minutes a week, guidance classes. And basically that is self-regulation skills. Those are those skills that we kind of expect kids to automatically know, but they don't necessarily. We would assume wrong if they know that. So things like taking turns, respecting other people's space, calming yourself down when you get stressed, how do you react to things, how do you solve problems, how you walk in a line, kind of all of that stuff that it takes to be successful in a big school setting. And then she has the choice room, which is her classroom, and that's open for alternative recess and before and after school. And there are work stations in there. So if kids need an alternative place to work, if there's something going on, like we have some kids who don't deal well with assemblies, for instance. So if we have an assembly and it's, there's loud music and there's, you know, lights on and off and some kids don't manage that well, they can go into her room and, and work with her during that time. Do you guys have anything to add? You guys pipe in any time? So this is during alternative recess. We have lots of young ladies who do not like to go out when it's twenty degrees or raining. So there's lots of other things for them to do. This is not nap time, this is teaching children how to decompress and they like it. This is one of her work stations in her room of just other things that kids can do during recess and before school. And then our Mars and L R C rooms, they are able to work with more kids right now because they are both teaching groups as they always have and they're facilitating other kids working with technology. So we brought in more technology to all of our intervention groups and that has had its ups and downs, we'll talk about that in a minute. And then both our Mars and L R C rooms are offering support times each day, which is new for us. So instead of having every minute of the day booked for groups, there are open spaces. If I have that... There are open spaces in their day, each day to just offer extra support. So if teachers are teaching a concept and it's clear that these three kids are not getting it, but the other twenty-two are, we might need to move... we might need to move on with these kids, but these three we can send to Mars or LRC or ELD or to workroom, which we'll look at in a minute, to have that concept re-taught immediately and practice with another adult one-on-one. And they also have workstations for kids who just need a different place to work that's maybe quieter and less going on, if you were people in it. And then, we have separated this year, Basic Skills and Functional Skills, which has been life-changing. So that's how we were able to bring Aaron in, so he has a separate classroom now from the Basic Skills classroom. And we were up to twenty-four kids at one time last year and they literally didn't fit into one classroom. We had to kind of hold the wall so that the teacher could go back and forth. So this really allows both of these programs to teach and help kids move forward instead of managing crises. It's been awesome. And then, you know, parents are everywhere and that kind of started last year. We can have fifteen parents on safety duties at any one time, which is great. And now they have office hours too, so that's our workroom. And what you don't see is the stacks of paper and pencils and coffee machines and reso and all of that. So most of the day, there is a parent assigned in there. So that's just an extra one-on-one person, just moms and dads who you kids just need a little bit of, like, stay on task and I need you to finish this, or need to make up the spelling test, that they're there to help kids do that. And this is the chart, every teacher has this on their wall, and so it says, ELD, workroom, Mars and LRC, and it indicates when those places are open and available to help kids. So teachers can kind of say, oh, they didn't get this, but they really need to work with Inga, but Inga's not available until two, so then they know, I can send Inga to two o'clock, or send these kids to Inga at two o'clock for help. The same for all of our intervention areas. The hundredth clock, so fun. So, we actually went with five sessions of kindergarten this year because our kinder numbers were a little bit lower. And so we have three sessions in the morning and then two sessions in the afternoon. And the afternoon kindergarten teacher that doesn't have a kindergarten class is doing first grade intervention. So these are kiddos that didn't get those kindergarten skills and really are not ready to be successful in a first grade classroom. We did not retain them in kindergarten because what good does it do to retain them for a two-hour and twenty-minute school day? We wanted to have them all day and double-dose them. So they go to first grade in the morning and then they get double-dosed in the afternoon. And bless her heart, Lassana Becker, she was told when she showed up to work, hey, how would you feel about doing something else during teaching day? And she said, okay, sure. And she planned this intervention program that I had no idea if it would work. It was kind of, it was very different. Three days a week of just reading skills and two days a week of just math skills, so not the traditional centers that our little kids are used to. But she has already exited four kids out of the program that have gotten those skills and caught up with our first grade class. So it's very successful and they can have a lot of fun in there too.
Jennifer, how many kids are in that?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And then room thirty-two. Doesn't that make you wanna talk quiet? So, our basement did have a computer lab in it hardwired and we went with a mobile lab so that we could open that up for classroom space and the rest of it was storage, so we got rid of some junk. And this classroom is an environment that's created to kind of reduce the stimuli that is setting kids off. It's for kids who are really sensitive to their environment in terms of noises, tactile stuff, other people in their space. Notice the lighting is different, the desks are very large, they're spread out more. There's a table in the back there that is stand-up height. If they, you know, fidgety and just wanna stand up and work, they can do that. They've got their technology profiles and a little computer maker inside there. And then there's a focus in that classroom on learning and practicing those self-population skills. So that, the hope is that those kids learn to manage their environment better and then can go back into regular classroom environments with those skills and be able to be successful. And we have kids in that program that parents are saying they love school, they've always hated school. It's always been a paddle to get them to school and this they can do. I kind of love it down there too. Oh, that's the reading nook under the stairs, that's in room thirty-two. Who doesn't love that? And then our technology, so we have, if we had lots more adults, we wouldn't need the kind of technology that we're currently using. But with little kids, they kind of need that one-on-one coaching. And with so few adults, we have found, and there is really good stuff out there, technology that will work one-on-one with kids. It's the intuitive technology. So, we can set levels of what skills we want them to work on, we can get very specific information about what skills they're getting and what they're not, now quickly they're getting them. The technology self-adjusts so that if they get three questions wrong, it's gonna move them back a level and make it a little bit easier if they get three questions right, it's gonna move them forward. If they miss a bunch in a row, it will give them another lesson. So these kids, really, we can get them rolling in a facilitating way. So we're using, that's in the Mars room there, so that's how, one way that they're being able to serve more kids at a time because the technology can help us with that. And then we get asked a lot, why are we going with iPads? Cause we're kind of the iPad pushers of the district instead of the laptops. We really were wired for the laptops or the hardwired labs. And for little kids, I'm gonna come off of this here and show you. Here's an example of one that our teachers use quite a bit and it's that fast. And so this comes up on the screen, they say, click the mouse, they click the mouse, and then they just have to find their picture on the bottom. And then it shows them where they are in the kindergarten skills. And then as the teacher, I can go in, how do I do that? I can go in and look at any kid's profile, these are fake kids by the way. Well, they're real kids in the pictures, but they're fake profiles. So, I can turn, if I want Alexis, say, to just work on addition, I can turn off all of the other skills and have her just work on addition. And then it will give me very specific feedback on where she is, how many she's missing, what the patterns are. It takes me minutes, seconds really to do that. And then the teachers can just hand the iPad to the kids, all they have to do is click their profile and they're off. It's just, it works very quickly. And then it tells you when you do it wrong, when you just plug in their headphones, but it gives you instruction real time. And it has rewards built in.
Awesome. You found the word red. What is four plus zero?
So, this bucket, if it's plus zero, there's nothing there.
When adding zero, do not add any seagulls. Tap on all of the seagulls to count them.
And then kids who don't yet have number sense can do the...
One, two, three, four.
So that's just an example of how it works that much faster when you're dealing with just little kids. It's just, we can do the laptop lab and the hardwired lab and we do, because there are some programs that don't yet run on the iPads. But this is a lot more user-friendly in the classroom. And then with this feature that we're using right now, the Apple TVs, that's what this is, so I'm wireless. And, so whatever's on the screen, on my screen, is gonna be on your screen. So I can walk around the classroom and have kids take turns like doing problems or answering questions and it all shows up on here. The tech team's done an amazing job of getting us wired in with sound and the whole thing. So, it's been an undertaking and it's had its ups and downs, but we're getting there. And then we've implemented this year a weekly One Call Now for announcements coming up the following week. And Friday folders, this goes home with every kid in school, every Friday. So parents know, look for this and you will know what is going on. And on our One Call Now, we say, look for this in the Friday folder. And then any information that comes directly from our office goes in the back cover of this. And then our PTC, it has been great about working with Don Kelly and getting up and running again. And they have a great website and email and they have a phone tree and putting out contact lists, so they're going. And then we have our health services, Hall Lilia, bless Duellin, that's literally the old safe room and it still has papers stored in it, but she moved in and made her cell phone window, cause it really is a closet. But there is not a day at Eugene Field that we don't have a seizure or an insulin alarm going off or an asthma attack or something. So, we're very happy to have her there. And yeah, that's what we have at Seven On One too. You guys have anything to add?
I love working for Seven Falls, it's awesome here. I came from California. And things are amazing here compared to where I came from. I came from a school where I had fourteen students with only two other staff members and it was pre-K through to seventh grade and it was very difficult. And the staff was, well, let's just say it wasn't the same. I love it here and I'm grateful to have my class. I have a class of, today it was eight students, tomorrow somebody's moving, so it's going down to seven, but I have amazing staff. The whole function on my classroom is functional skills and communication skills. Most of my students don't have much communication, so they're non-verbal or they have very little communication. We're working on behaviors and interventions and the most basic pre-academic stuff. Mostly pre-academics and social skills, that's what we're focused on. In the Basic Skills classroom, she's doing everything that my kids can't and hire, so. She has a little more students, but my students have higher needs, so they're more physically disabled. They have, we have lots of equipment that we have to put our students in. But the schedule is very difficult, trying to get kids mainstreaming into other classrooms, we do a lot of that. And just trying to figure out, you know, how I'm gonna get breaks and lunches to my staff, but it's been going really good and just loving it.
Yes, that's good to see.
Wish there was some fruit in the orange, I think.
Oh, I don't know. I guess I could admit that I've been at Eugene Field for twenty years. I started out as an aide in kindergarten and crosswalk duty and then helped in media and now in the front office. My husband went to, you know, there's history and I'm gonna stay here. It's really, I mean, it's the best place. My children went to Eugene Field and now my granddaughter's going there, so it's just a great place.
One other thing I wanted to add, I've been installing Apple TVs throughout the school. I kind of took on a voluntary tech toss-up kind of position and I've been just going throughout the classrooms and installing Apple TVs and these things are amazing. I had, Jennifer and I went to a presentation with Apple at the Canby School District last week. And they've done their own research projects in comparing when they first started their first classroom with one iPad and now they have over thirty-seven hundred iPads in the district. The amount of progress that students were making before the iPads came along as compared to now is incredible. And the reading progress and especially math and science, it's just amazing. So my hope is to help initiate that, cause I'm a really big Apple guy, so. It's kind of fun for me, at the same time I get to talk with all the teachers and see how things are going and it's just a way to get more involved.
This is an example of, remember the old black and white elements charts, that worksheets that we had? That we learned the elements and to fill them in? It's different for our kids. There's songs that go with this and like flashcards that come up on this app, it's just, it keeps kids pretty engaged.
Makes it fun.
Also the language that they speak, so.
Jennifer, how many iPads do you guys use?
Every teacher has an iPad.
Every teacher has one?
And, what are we, about halfway there on Apple TVs? We own all the Apple TVs, we're working on getting them installed now that they run. We had to actually put in a different network to have them run, but now that they are running.
Eleven teachers have Apple TVs that are functioning properly and there's like eleven more to be installed, so.
They're very cool. One of the teachers showed me one, I was having a long time, showed me how it works, it's really cool.
So you can do a lot just with one in the classroom if you have the capacity to project it.
I see.
So, but our title rooms, our intervention programs have about ten, so they can run two small groups on the iPads. And these are the cases that the kids use, you can basically dribble these, these are the kind.
Very cool. Very interesting. Questions? Anybody have questions for these guys?
Thanks for all your hard work and keep it up.
Very good report.
Have a great time, right?
That's what you're supposed to say, huh?
That's right.
Yeah, real quick, Jennifer?
Yeah.
How the kids enjoy the children's theater show that I've come and had?
Loved it. They loved it. Anytime high schoolers can come, but if they're gonna come and put on a funny play with props, all of us.
Come on back, old school here.
Good reporter.
Little paper, poor Jen after that presentation. Yeah, the paper, going to the paper version. We have our iPad at Robert Frost.
Kristen Jorgens at Robert Frost.
Alright, so I host tonight with some more celebrations, we've got a lot to celebrate and I'm glad Jackie's here, cause most of it's about her. So, first thing is to follow up the field up to play sixty grand, I talked about it this fall. Continuing to make healthy, healthy choices part of our culture at Robert Frost. Encouraging healthy eating and increased activity for our students. Color of the month for February is red, of course, so kids are bringing a variety, we're seeing a lot of variety of red fruits and vegetables coming in. One of my favorite stories so far this year is the color for January was brown. And that girl said, look, my mom bought me brown bread, wheat bread. And she, mom had never bought whole wheat bread before, but because the color of the month was brown, mom had bought. She said, I kind of like it, so I think she's gonna keep buying it. So I thought that was, I mean, that was all worth it right there. So brown bread is whole wheat bread for some students, but you know, it's, now it's putting a change in healthy choices in our family too, which was good. We also have the Run Walk Club where kids are running and walking during recess, do about a half-mile route and we track over nineteen-hundred miles this year as a school, so it's pretty exciting. Kids are really excited. Right now in the fall, I mean, the winter is kind of hard because of the weather in the moment, but they're still out there, when they make the days they can be out there, the kids are out walking the half-mile loop, so that's pretty exciting. So Jackie has been a star with Battle of the Books. I think she said seventeen hours of competition so far this year. We have seventy-eight students competing in the battle, so they're meeting Jackie at lunch every day and they're battling over, I'm not sure how many books.
Sixteen.
Sixteen that they've read, usually teams of four, very intense, it's almost as intense as Wall Wall at Robert Frost. The kids are very serious, there's even some tears today from the fifth grade boy. So it's pretty exciting, but Jackie works really hard at that and I want to recommend her for that as well. Jackie also had the author visit with Graham Salisbury. He's an author of the Calvin Coconut series, if you're familiar with those, Under the Blood Red Sun, the other World War II books. And he came and did an assembly at Robert Frost. Jackie had practiced singing the song Sunshine Pop and it had been playing all week in the library. And so we were all kind of bumping our heads to it every time we heard it. Kids knew the words and then at the assembly, they greeted him with, the students were singing it. And so Graham actually emailed Jackie and said, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for the spectacular event put together last week. It was the best, one of the best I've experienced. I'll always remember the welcome in the gym, everyone singing Sunshine Pop and waving their lades. For a moment, I was eldest. Awesome. Your students were designing it. So it was really neat, it was a fun day and all the staff and a lot of the students dressed in Hawaiian gear. We even had some students who earned lunch with the author and so Jackie had the library tables decorated with Hawaiian decor and ham, pineapple wrapped with ham and some other Hawaiian, Indian nuts, some pukabas and stuff like that, so that was fun. She really went all out. We have Kathy Lore as an artist from Salem who's gonna be coming here as an artist in residence, our PTC is funding that. So starting in April, she'll be coming two days a week with each classroom and doing a clay art project that the kids will be creating for our eleventh annual art show in May. So, that's really exciting and Audrey Delgado has done a lot of the work to get that organized and so that's a big event coming up at Robert Frost. And then really what I'm most excited about right now is, Teresa Sennmore and I have been working, Teresa Sennmore, Teresa Skirletz, and I've been working on a program called Learn with the Fox. And we kind of got the idea in, I think, December and really pulled it together. Teresa stayed on her side with getting some students interested in. It's a peer mentor tutoring opportunity where high school kids come to Robert Frost and work with a student. And Brianna Zollinger is a star, she's, this is her senior project and she's done a lot of organizing. And so right now there's six kids who come every day to Robert Frost and they work with a student. And we selected students who are, need some academic help, but mostly the peer mentoring, the positive contact, the positive role model. And it's been great, the high school kids are... The high school kids are excited. They check in every day. They're really happy to be there, and they, I kind of said, "How, how's it going?" And they're having a great time. And, um, Robert Frost kids are very excited. I saw two mentoring the students sitting out, um, under the tree today. Uh, when they were just visiting, reading a book, talking, and just, it's just been a great opportunity for the kids. I mean, we're about a week into it, but, um, so far, it's been great. Teachers are happy, um, happy with the results they're seeing. And sometimes the kids are in the class helping, and then sometimes they're just out in the mezzanine reading or working on math or what. So, um, Learn with the Fox is how we call it, and the high school kids are getting credit. So it's a credit they can get for, for them.
Are they per period, one period a day?
One period a day, except for Thursdays, because of the RIE schedule. So they're just for one period, mostly around their lunchtime, so the travel, so they come fifth or sixth period. And then one of the students, Branda Zollinger, is actually there for sixth and seventh. And so she has two girls she's working with, and, um, it's been, it's really exciting. We're hoping to keep, obviously, want more high school kids doing it. But it's, it's just kind of in the beginning. We tell them, "We're already need kids," and so we're getting feedback from them. And then on Thursdays, the high school students are meeting with Therese, and they're, um, talking about kind of a feedback on how things are going and then working with, getting some trainings for them on writing and being peer tutor, peer mentor or peer editors. And so working on getting them some skills so they can really help give, give our kids some positive feedback on academics as well. Kind of what we're focused right now is a lot around assessments. Um, Oaks, we just started last week, but of the fifty-two percent of our sixth graders that have tested, seventy-eight have met or exceeded. So that's a great start. Um, and then what we're really celebrating is two of our structural, structured learning program students passed. Met, met, which is a big, real big deal for, um, Mr. Holmer and his kids. So we were very much celebrating that. Um, also began the district writing assessment this month, and Elba testing, um, English and other proficiency assessment is just about done. And so Kathy Deldez is working hard to get that done, which has been good. Um, and then the Student Support Center is also known as our problem-solving room. And we've, I was noticing that it wasn't being utilized in the morning. From about eight fifteen to eleven, there wasn't a lot of students going there. And we had a classified staff sitting there with nothing to do. And so, um, we did, looked at the data and how many kids were going in there, and we noticed there was one week where eight kids were there. So it felt like a real waste of this person's time, and we have a fourth-grade group that needs a lot of support. What we've done is we've closed the Student Support Center from eight fifteen to eleven. Um, Shelley Kenzie, who was working in there, is working with math and reading in the fourth grade. So she assists her Title One and spends one day a week in each of the five fourth-grade classrooms. And so she's supporting the, um...
Sorry.
Um, she's supporting the fourth-grade, um, teachers during that time. And then, um, and then the kids who are needing to get taken out of the classroom for behavior reasons were, are coming, being sent to me. Um, but only ten kids have come since November sixteenth. So, um, teachers are dealing with the discipline more in their classroom.
What's wrong?
Well, during that timeframe, I don't, I don't know what's wrong, because this is my first time through. But, um, there was, there was more kids that were being sent to that, that classroom because it was a space and it was easy to send them. Um, whereas this way, we're keeping kids in the class, which I think is more important than sending them to another room. Um, and so there are still behavior issues, but we're dealing with them either in the class. They have, the teachers have buddy rooms, and so they'll send them to the neighboring classroom for fifteen minutes to get out, out of the disruption, disrupting their peers, and then go back. So, um, it's been a great, a great addition, I think. Also, it opens up that SSC classroom, so we've had meetings there, uh, small groups with our counselor, and then, um, Oaks testing for our smaller groups. So it's kind of helping us with space as well. So, um, that's been good. And then our Read-A-Thon is coming up, starting February fourteenth, titled For the Love of the Lab. Um, and the goal is to raise some money to start replacing the computers in our library because they're pretty outdated. And so, um, I think it's, uh, usually raised around six thousand dollars. It's a pretty big, big fundraiser for us all. So that's another one of Jackie's, um, big things that she's doing. So in her spare time, she's going to start raising money. So, that's Robert Frost. Any questions?
Questions? You're doing a good job of it.
Thanks.
Yeah. Board reports. Anybody have anything to share tonight?
I'd like to recognize Jan for the work she did to restructure the bond. Save taxpayers one point six million, is that right, Andy? So, thank you, Jan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Very good. And real quickly, I'll just come out a couple of things. I was able to go out to Scotts Mills, um, a couple of weeks ago. Awesome school. Um, teachers are great out there. The, they have a couple of new staff members, second-grade teachers, and then the, uh, one of the, one of the junior high teachers, seventh, eighth grade, doing a really good job. Kids were working hard. The, um, first-grade classroom, really kids reading to me, perfect penmanship. It was really, really neat to see. And just all over the school, there was just really good things going on. Kids were working hard on Ellen Floss's classroom. Always fun to go into, especially when she's teaching math and I don't understand it. Yeah, but the, the kids were getting it. It was, she's just a really awesome teacher, really energetic. So really good things to see out there. I also went, was able to go to Butte Creek, same thing. Um, really good things happening, kids working hard. I, I'm amazed at the progress some of the kids have made with reading. They split their first-grade class, so they have smaller classrooms. And one of the teachers was telling me it's really made a difference. And I could really see it in the kids, you know, just comparing and, um, just the level they were at already. And, um, let's see what else. I forgot my notes. But, um, in the junior highs, lots of things going on there. Um, a couple of student teachers, kids working hard on math and reading and writing. One neat thing I saw in the science, um, science classroom. They had done a project where they had gotten some money from, um, I think, the Dr. Ken Dentist. And they had a parent build a shake table, which is what you would think to simulate an earthquake. And the kids had built, um, built these structures, you know, wood. I mean, really, really cool stuff. Uh, some were out of wood, some were out of other materials, but they would shake, they would put them on the shake table and see, see how they would, would stand in earthquake. And some of the designs and the, um, some of the, the stuff the kids made were just really strong. I don't think, she said none of them went down. They, you know, some of them moved around and things like that. She was thinking of, um, modifying that next year where they maybe couldn't use so many nails and, you know. So, and they also did a tsunami test with these houses they built where they would dump water on them. So a pretty cool thing. She showed me the shake table, and it, it moved pretty good. It was kind of fun. So, so lots of neat things, and the, the new play shed out there, awesome. I walked out in it, it's big, it's, it has light coming in from all around it. Really good addition to that school. So neat things happening everywhere. Any other board reports? Good correspondence. We had a, some email, letters by email from some Scotts Mills parents. Anything else? Okay. Second audience of visitors. Would anybody like to address the board tonight? Last chance. John?
Uh, yes, um, my name is, uh, John Mannion. I'm a teacher at, uh, oh, sorry.
You have to sign in too. Denise has gone in.
So, um...
Thanks, John.
Sure. But, um, my name is John Mannion. I'm a teacher at the high school, and it's my, uh, third school year in Solton. My wife is a teacher at Eugene Field, and, um, I have four kids, two are in college. One graduated from Solheim, one's at Mark Twain, one's at Eugene Field, just for kind of my perspective. And I've been, uh, attending the, uh, bond, uh, meetings, and I, it's very apparent, you know, it's a really, um, you guys know from my time at work, um, on a very short timetable to, um, try to put it all together. And I know, it was kind of brought up a little earlier about different parts of it. I certainly, uh, understand the, um, the urgency of the timing with the May bond coming off and going on. If you wait, then it has the appearance of people's taxes are getting raised. And so there's a very fluid situation that I can very much appreciate. Um, I came here from California, and I know budget situations and, and, uh, bond measures down there are very challenging and difficult. And I know, um, with that in mind, um, I really think that, and I, and I do hope that, um, the bond does go forward, and I think that it is successful. Um, but my own realism of this kind of thing, and not, and my other thing is I don't know, not only have I lived here for less than three years, I don't know the history of it. I know at some of the meetings, um, there's been talk about, like Eugene Field's been on the table as a problem since the sixties or seventies for almost forty years now. And I know that, um, you know, I know that a lot of times with bonds, you know, or any election, the status quo is often, uh, people aren't sure, like, you know, well, it's just gone this far. Let's just kind of keep it what we're doing. And, um, I guess my point is that I, while I hope and support and vote for a bond measure, I think like, kind of a backup plan would be important. And I think that, you know, what struck me coming out of the presentation last couple of weeks back at the high school with the engineers and the, and the different reports and the slideshow was really that I don't see the, I don't really feel it very viable, you know, whether the bond passes or not, to put kids back in Eugene Field. And I think that, you know, when our custodians mopped the floor, we put a slippery floor sign up. But, you know, we've got a building that they said was like, nothing's the code. It's hazardous on so many levels. So I guess, you know, one of the thoughts I had was if that wasn't the case, you know, if the bond doesn't pass, we can't put them back there. Because, I mean, for me, as an educator, I, I know about liability. That's a huge liability, especially after the public meeting where there was pictures of how, you know, bad it is. So I guess my thought was, we have buses, and we have these outlined schools, other properties, that you take just to this in Eugene Field, and you put a portable in Evergreen, and you put a couple of portals in Victor Point, and you put one, you know, until you can discourage kids. Because really, it's not the kids' fault. So there's four hundred ninety-three, four hundred ninety-three kids that theoretically, if this thing doesn't go through, are going to be just kind of plunked right back into a hazard situation. So that just wasn't the thought, that, you know, I mean, hopefully it doesn't come to that. Hopefully it passes, but just for consideration, because I just think after, especially after that public meeting that was held, it seems like the picture that, you know, my wife teaches there, and my son goes there. So I'm out, I've been there a lot, and I didn't even realize the extent of how inherently dangerous it was. So that was just an idea or a thought moving forward if it does not pass. So, yeah.
Any questions or anything?
But anyhow, thank, thank you. But also, I appreciate, you know, the difficulty in doing it. I've been part of bond measures, so I know it's, there's a lot of balls in the air and it's a very fluid situation. But, you know, just to kind of look at the what-if if it will not pass. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks very much. Would anybody else like to address the board? Nobody? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to action items. The school calendar has been taken care of. We'll do that in March. And number B, consideration of a May two thousand thirteen general obligation, bond election as per resolution number two dash eleven dash two thousand thirteen, which we had in our packet and another copy that hasn't changed yet. So, is there a motion?
I'll move for approval, um, of the resolution number two eleven thirteen. With the understanding, we'll do, still do some work on, on, um, defining the overall scope. We do have a maximum bonding number on here, thirty-six million nine hundred dollars, and, uh, more within that.
Second? Any, any other discussion? Hey, all in favor?
I'm vying.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, passes. Looks like we're going to bond in May. More details coming very soon. Okay, um, we're going to adjourn to executive session under R S one nine two point six six oh. Uh, we'll take a brief break, and then we'll come back here for executive session. Thank you for coming, everyone. Much appreciated.